Okay, good evening, everyone. Want to welcome you all to the Tuesday, April 1, 2025 meeting of the Douglas Board of Select. And if you can all stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right, in preparation for today's meeting, I was trying to come up with some sort of April Fool's joke, and frankly, nothing was worth it, but it did get me thinking as to what is April Fool's Day? So I asked ChatGPT what April Fool's Day is, and they were kind enough to tell me in a matter of .2 seconds that the origins of April Fool's Day are unclear, but one theory traces it back to France in 1582, when the calendar switched from the Julian to the Gregorian system, moving New Year's Day from April 1 to January 1. And those who still celebrated in April were marked as quote-unquote "April Fools." So there you have it. That's about it for me today. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to something that's currently not on our agenda? Seeing as none, we'll move right into a poll petition, public hearing.
We don't.
Yeah, we're gonna hold off on that one. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Move.
Seconded by Ross, seconded by Hal. All those in favor?
Aye.
And here we have in our packet, poll petition number 31073101 for Riedel Road, Main Street, where we're going to install one JO poll on Riedel Road and relocate five JO polls on Main Street. National Grid is proposing to relocate five JO polls on Main Street and install one JO poll on Riedel Road to eliminate the existing poll in the intersection of Riedel and Main per request of the town. So Mike, you're here. Come forward. How are you today?
I am good. How are you?
Good, thank you. Pretty straightforward. Why didn't we put this telephone pole right in the middle of the road in the first place?
I'm sure it's been there since the '40s and just probably paved around it at one point.
Fair enough. Anything tricky to it?
Um, no, just probably moving a few extra poles than needed just because there was talks of possibly widening the road in that area, putting it out of turn lane if any possible development on the corner there. So that's the only, I guess, tricky part of it.
Well, this was requested by the town, and appreciate their responsiveness there. Is there any questions for Mike on the board? Is there any straightforward? Anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this quirky New England road feature? Seeing as none.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Mike makes the motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Seconded by Ross. All those in favor?
Aye.
Question at hand.
Make a motion to approve the installation of one JO poll on Riedel Road and relocate the five JO polls out on Main Street.
Second.
Motion been made by Ross, seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
On to number six. We have a joint meeting with the Water Sewer Commissioner friends. Come on up, gentlemen. Actually, it might be premature.
So just to clarify, how, what we put on the agenda, what we got from Town Council. So the 40D disclosure that Mr. LaHoo's provided indicates that he is an employee of Pine Sand and Gravel in a management role. And an appointing authority can rule on your apparent conflict of interest and say that it will not interfere with your ability to make decisions. Your appointing authority, because you're filling the remainder of an unexpired term, your appointing authority was a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Water Commissioners.
Right.
So that's why this is here, is to have your appointing authority consider that discussion. But in a phone call with Town Council shortly before this meeting started, Town Council's opinion was definitive, and not, I want to say adamant, but very clear, that he feels that it would not be in the appointing authority's interest to give you that clearance, because it's very hard to tease out your relationship, because your employer's economic interest is imputed to you. You basically represent the owner of real estate that will benefit or not benefit from the project to be discussed later in this meeting. So that being said, the recommendation to Mr. Hoo's was to recuse himself from the preceding period and not go through with this discussion by the appointing authority. But you do have to, in a way, you have to convene. It's not in a way. You should convene so he can recuse himself. The recusal's on the record of both the Water Commission and the Select Board, and then it's nice, nice, neat, neat. And then the commission will be represented by its one last man standing during the discussion later.
Yep.
Okay. So are you gonna call your meeting?
Yes, call the Water Sewer Committee meeting to order at 7:07. Members present are myself calling here and Kyle LaHoo's.
And so, not to be heavy-handed with scripting, but at this point, you would simply say, on the advice of Council, I choose to recuse myself from any further discussion.
On the advice of Council, I'd like to recuse myself for the discussion.
So, and then the advice is you leave the room until that conversation is over.
Okay. Thank you. So, am I gonna discuss? Get to that now?
So that's the next item on the agenda, so, but your meeting is still open in a way.
Sure.
So, we're looking at the item number seven, the town meeting warrant of, I don't know what the actual numbers going to be, but we're looking to support another department. Just some retained earnings from the Water Sewer Department in the form of $250,000. I guess it's gonna be Article 21 in our soon-to-be-printed finalized warrant, and that's really what we're here to talk about.
So the other matter, Mr. Chairman, before the board, because this information arrived after your agenda was posted, it's more timely to deal with it now than later in the agenda for topic not anticipated, 48 Iowa's in advance, is staff recommendation and legal counsel recommendation, mostly staff, around the acceptance of two roads that each have in a separate article on your existing warrant. So when you, if you decide to open, reopen the warrant, the conversation is not only the Water Sewer article, it's the fate of the William Drive acceptance and the Whiten Heights acceptance.
Yeah, so as I was looking at that, I always thought we might take up those issues on 10 and then close out number nine, which seemed perverse to me.
So, I guess the trouble I have is you will have already closed the warrant.
Yes, so number seven.
So, so when I was looking at the sequencing here, if you've already closed the warrant, then the warrant is done, you could take a position on the articles that you left in and simply say, well, we left them in, but we're opposed to them. But if you have the warrant open, you could remove those articles.
Even though the agenda says open the annual town meeting warrant in a specific --
For that, yeah. Well, I guess what I'm saying here is that you've received this information, at least with respect to William Drive, after you posted your agenda.
Say that again?
You received this information after you posted your agenda. You could say you want to take 17 in the context of seven and move it up.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, we just need to get there. I don't care.
Neither do I.
So let's entertain a motion to open the annual town meeting warrant.
So move.
Made by Mike, seconded by Les. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so with that wide open and open for discussion, since you guys are here, Article 21 is brought before us, and I think ultimately will be brought before the town. The purpose for this is to support an economic development grant, Bob's here, but very cognizant of the work you guys do, and really like to hear from you as, as the commissioners in regards to this article and where we go.
So, a little history, just, it was recently discussed about the, about the grant that was coming out, and Bob and I didn't need some funding for that, and we're always open to help out whenever we can with ever, any grants or anything like that, helping the town in general. It was just a number that was hard to wrap our hands around, given we have a lot of forecasts going into 2025, and like we talked about, was that's the issue that we were looking at, but I think we've worked it out enough that we feel confident enough that we could, if we could absorb that out of the retained earnings, retained earnings, and then maybe, and then that could work with us on that going into 2027, I'd say a big pleasure about that. And I think that, all in all, I think it's a good, a good project, a good grant, I think it helps out Mr. Manera substantially to get, to get that grant from my understanding.
Speaking of the microphone, picking you up.
They can't hear in the audience. Just drag the whole thing forward if you want, Colin.
So I just, I think, I think the concept behind it, I think, is it's a great idea.
It's gonna be all the way up.
All the way up.
Yep.
I know, nobody likes to hear your own voice on the microphone. You gotta do it.
Yeah, no, yeah. So I think, I think generally, the project is, like I said, it's a, it's a great idea, I think, and hopefully we can, we can move forward on that and get that acceptance of the grant and get that, get that rolling. I don't know if Bob wants to say anything on that, or Bob, you have anything?
No, it's two grants, a Mass Works, and a Federal EDA.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Say it again?
I'm asking to be recognized.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
It is not, our strategy for winning grants is not a secret, so it doesn't need to be protected. Last year, we were unsuccessful obtaining this Mass Works grant. We asked for the full amount for both the roadway project and the tank project, and we were denied, and we asked the reviewing committee for their feedback on why we didn't win. And we got, I thought, very helpful, honest feedback. We asked for too much money, and we did not have enough municipal skin in the game to convince the reviewing committee that the town was adamant that it needed this project. Now, from Mr. Manera's point of view and my point of view, that's an unfortunate outcome because we actually are doing a wonderful job of leveraging this grant application. So, conceptually, the strategy became to reduce the project, the whole project, to no longer include the roadway and pipe improvements, do that as a separate project, and focus on the tank, a project that was contemplated many, many years ago when North Village was required to donate a parcel of land to support a tank in order to support fire flows in that whole part of the town, and we can climb into the seat and get the work done to connect the tank and make it a viable asset and as a separate project. Tanks are expensive. They are also looked upon very favorably by the grant reading agencies because it fills a need they recognize. So infrastructure projects always do well in these conversations because it's viewed as the basis for economic development is having utilities available. So Bob's strategy, and I support it 100%, is it's, it's not quite bootstrapping Hal, but it's darn close, to ask for a Mass Works grant that is eligible to be a match for the federal EDA grant application. So you get the Mass Works grant, you pledge it to be the match for EDA, and then you fund the whole project. How do you reduce the size of the project and get skin in the game? The town needs to make an investment of town funds, and the federal piece of this is adamant that they be appropriated funds. So we cannot use our corporate pledges from our development partners as a match. They have said you cannot do that. So we have now, this is the number that's gonna slip me.
337.
337 from one partner.
350.
And 350 from the other. So we're gonna reduce the overall size of the project by $687,000, and then if we have a town match, and in this case, we're asking $250,000. It basically says you've reduced the size, and then you've gone up to well over a 10% match, or almost a 12 and 1/2, 13, 14%. What did you get?
It would be 11%.
11% match. But when you, as a, if you're gonna review this as a granting agency, you're looking at it, well, look, they got pledges from CRG, they got a pledge, a check already in hand from Skanel, the Water Department's putting some money towards the tank, we might, is this a project we want to fund? And that, we think, is our best chance at winning. So the different scenarios for the Water Department would be kind of like this. If we don't get the grant, we go back to town meeting, get your 250 put back into your retained earnings. If we get the grant, then we have to have an intelligent conversation about the financial condition of the Water Commission as it stands with retained earnings. And our partnership as a Water Commission and as a town has been very successful and cordial. When we negotiated a development agreement with CRG, we asked them not for ball fields or fancy lights or, you know, feel-good stuff. We said we need, we need maintenance equipment for the Water Department. So things that you may never have wanted, been able to, to fund because it just wouldn't have met your priority. In terms of a valve exercising trailer with the trailer under it, a small mini excavator to get in those tight spots, and we have water breaks, and a trailer to haul that. All that entire $300,000 is to your benefit, they're your assets. We have made matches on the town side for all of the engineering, for the so-called site readiness grants, which will significantly expand the territory on Davis Street of the Water Department, and on North Street, I think it's really time probably to revisit the infrastructure there, the pipes, connections, all the rest of it. So there's already two $500,000 grants that the town got that facilitated these conversations. So on a go-forward basis, you know, I, I think the door's wide open for a conversation about how maybe we don't give you every single one of those $250,000 back in their original form, but we make significant contributions, maybe even well over 250, depending on circumstances, to continue to move the agenda forward. I think our overall concern, and Bob's gonna get real nervous, but Bob can trust me because I'm not gonna have a classified conversation on an app. One of the most fundamental things that we need to do to defend the resilience of the community in the event of significant setbacks is make sure that all of our water assets are communicating to each other and can transfer resources to each other so that no part of the town is de-watered or loses service. A tank on North Street will definitely help with that conversation, but another part of that conversation is a more significant project on Main Street, that we can't rush because of the volume of traffic that rumbles over 16. But I think we, speaking only for myself, my recommendation to my board and to the Finance Committee is that when the assets, when we have the ability to fund that project, that we go forward with you in a partnership that has a significant town involvement, and that's only one possibility, we can talk about other things. But right now, we're in a lurch, because Bob's gonna do his application online by the first week of June. Town meeting is May 5, and it's already April 1. So we really, frankly, are grateful for the help of the commission on this because it's the only way we can get this done.
Glad to help. I think, not to, you referred to the Main Street project, from Franklin Street to the tank. You're talking about that? Yes.
To Matt's point, the application, the grant application doesn't happen unless we, as a town, demonstrate that we're serious about that, and there's not a lot of places in which we can pull this from, so, to the extent that we can offset this initial hit, the commission in mind, the department in mind down the road, we gotta get through this grant and that Bob did was thing. That's my take.
And the issue, one of the issues that we've talked about is the, the revenue that comes out of these projects, like primarily, most of the revenue is, is coming from, is coming from going to the tax base. Like, for example, I think the new revenue was four, $3 million with all the other stuff. Our revenue coming in for all the infrastructure improvements is minimal. I think we, I mean, it's like, it's one toilet in one building, and it's next, it's negligible next to nothing. So there's really no revenue coming outside. The big benefit is for the tax base. So that's why it's hard, I mean, some of these big numbers is really hard to, to work with and try to keep our budget in line and keep everything.
Yeah. And Mr. Chairman, we can be sensitive to that. What we don't know, and this is really important that we don't know, is what they're gonna build at Pine Sand and Gravel.
Yeah.
If you would ask me a year ago, I would have told you confidently, I know what I think, what they're gonna do. Sitting here right now, in the economic environment we're on, they're working very hard to regain site control, but exactly what they build there, I don't know. We have had, we were a finalist for a manufacturing facility that would have wanted more water than you could ever pump, right? And that was four years ago, five years ago. So it's hard to predict what the economy's gonna bring us, but the important signal for you is that we understand that the primary benefit is to the real estate tax base and to the overall, overall fiscal condition of the town. It doesn't help you generate a whole lot of revenue. So, I mean, we could work around that. We could work, make that work.
No, we've always been good partners, and I think moving forward, I hope that continues. I'm sure, hopefully you have a good outcome at the end of the day.
Yeah, no, and you're right to raise those concerns today. That'd be taken a fair amount, so. Doesn't change where we land in this packet, though. Any thoughts, board?
I just got a quick question. Do we have an idea of the size of this tank?
$300,000.
$300,000. It's only 150 feet tall. Can't see the red balloon from the street.
They did do a balloon there.
They did a balloon test. Not cheap. I would have gone over there with a helium tank and stood there if that was gonna.
This is Welcome Douglas.
What's that?
Welcome to Douglas or something like that. The Midwest, all of the tanks usually have something like that with American flag and...
We're gonna put Matt's face on it.
That's another 75,000. It is. It was in the estimate.
Is that right? To paint it?
Do you have a copy of this language?
I don't, I do not.
Can you share that with, so you can see what it is? Because it says possible language change, not to exceed 250, just to make sure that you understand what it is. Yep, just to make sure that you understand.
I didn't read it, but Matt did explain that to me.
Yep. So what's the next step? We, I think, to take a vote on this, or the?
As a standalone?
Entire commission do it over there?
So is that, yeah. Is that going to, not to exceed, or how does that?
So, so the warrant article will say not to exceed, Mr. Chairman. However, Gene has got a very sharp pencil pointed in my direction.
We all know that, we all know that.
When the motion is made on the floor of town meeting, it must specify an amount.
Okay.
And we will be specifying 250.
Okay. All right. Sure. Thank you.
You gotta give that back to Lisa.
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
She was kind of glaring at it.
Did you see her sit there?
So do we take a vote as a board, as a group, or does Colin, Colin and his group do it?
My understanding is a one-band band at this point.
Yeah, so I think it has to be a general. One, there's only one that can vote on, so it's not a quorum.
That would be myself, huh?
But, but for the record, you--
Those are the three guys I charged you to shovel snow. And Lefty, me, myself, and I, and Lefty, we got it done. Four of us.
Yeah, so I would entertain a motion to place on to the annual town meeting warrant, Article 21 in our packet, the Water Sewer Elevated Water Storage Tank. Made by Hal.
I don't want to say nothing about the dollar mark, that's okay. Second?
No, no, we can. It's been made by Hal, seconded by Mike. You have a question or a point?
Yep, just a note that the town's gonna vote, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $250,000.
Very good.
So move.
Yep.
Second.
Yep, we did that. Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, 5-0?
I just wanted to know, the number on the record.
Yeah, that's great. Great. Cool.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you very much, too.
Need to adjourn.
Yes.
He can come back in to adjourn, and then you're all-- The rules.
I know.
I know.
17 up.
Can we do, can I, can we adjourn over there? Or does it have to be on?
No, you do it here on, just do it here.
If you do it here, it's nice, nice.
It's not recorded over there.
No.
No. You guys can get in a lot of trouble off camera, we have to.
Keep it at the table.
Right, he's still open.
Yeah.
Took the Senate, what, 20 something hours?
Nothing like, thank you for volunteering, now leave the room.
One of your most important jobs as a Senate staffer was to tell your boss that the mics are live. Senator! My guy said some things that never should have been said behind a microphone.
Yeah, but back then, it was just a moment in time. Now it's forever.
It's happened again in state politics. It's been a derogatory remark about age, special, special needs kids. We caught it.
You should get that recording for your little mustache.
I can make that sound internal, but not outside, because it's not a real sound. Inside the car, I can make it as loud as I want.
Hopefully Kyle didn't go for pizza, because he's at a hybrid, delivered about eight pizzas.
Mine's electric. It's electric.
Oh, it's fully electric?
Yeah.
It's gotta be tough.
500 pounds of torque. Pretty good.
So if you go from coming from home to here, it's enough to go fucking back and forth.
In the winter with the heater on, it's tough. In the summer, I can go back and forth.
He'll be back.
Is he really?
Oh, did he? And I was like, you gotta adjourn the meeting.
He's new guy, man.
So--
You can just hang out.
Yeah, you can come back.
All right, with the annual town meeting still open, we have some cleanup that we might want to take care of. My understanding is some roads are not ready for the town of Douglas.
I'm gonna let the building commissioner explain the details.
Andy, how are you? Good, good. So, I know in front of you guys, you had three roads that were proposed for acceptance, and I went out and did some reviews on those roads this week, along with Adam Furno from the Highway Department. We'll start with the Williams Circle. That road is, is not ready for acceptance. There's multiple problems, even down to the fact that there's a boundary problem. One of the property boundaries goes through the middle of the road, and the property owner is not going to release his boundaries to the developer until the problems with the drainage on the road are satisfied. There's multiple problems, being that there's washouts, there's the pitch of the roads, water going at the driveways, proposing different, it's just, it's a mess. So I wouldn't recommend going forward with that for what I'm seeing, what I'm, what I'm visually seeing and seeing in the documentation on that.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think the, the property ownership flaw is fatal. You cannot transfer to the town title, to a piece of property you don't have title to. So they're gonna have to work that out. Figure that out. Oh, you drive fast.
I was there, I wanted to. I was getting off for dinner early.
Now you're gonna fit through this.
All right, and the, the next one is Whiten Heights.
Well, actually, let's do that, in the interest of your time. Come on, that would close out. That's fine. No, you can--
Two seconds, Ken. Two seconds.
Just get it on.
Yep. Sorry to hold you guys up.
I'd like to make a motion to call the Water Sewer Commission--
I'd like to make a motion to call the water sewer commission meeting to a close at 7:30.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you guys, have a good night.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
As you were.
Go ahead, Ken.
Okay, so, next one is the Whiten Heights development. There's still multiple things that have not been completed on that development. There was an accessway supposed to be gravelled into an a butter's property, it's not there. Line painting on the roads is not taken care of, just the finite details to the whole project. Even the ads built, they're not even showing the elevation to the roadway, whether they have any crown on the roadway. The drainage that's in the roadway is just shown as a line drawing, there's no elevation to the drainage, the catch basins. There was a grate that was supposed to be replaced on the catch basins for directional grate for the water drainage on the road. That, from what I see, hasn't been completed. So there's multiple things, along with the signage is at the wrong elevations and all that. So, I know they kept saying, and keep saying, that they'll get it taken care of, but it's not done.
Mm-hmm.
And then the last one would be Joseph Road development. I went up there, there was a section of it up near the turnaround, the end of the kiosk, that had some cracking across it, other than that, the roadway looks to be in really good condition, completed. Curvings, everything that was required is in there. I talked to the developer, he went up, looked at it today. He's going to bring in a company with the infrared machine and steal those, you'll never even know they were there. So he did address it, he is taking care of that. The only thing that I do know is that with a couple of these also, was some of the highway bounds have not been put in. There's still iron spikes in the ground. And there was comments made that, well, previously the planning board allowed that, but I don't know that the planning board allowed that on these developments. So there was one that had five bounds, I believe it was missing, and another one was three bounds.
Was that on Joseph Road?
Joseph Road had one that was a spike in the driveway. Because it was in the middle of the driveway, they didn't really want to put in the concrete posts. And previous planning boards had allowed them to put a spike in that location. The one that doesn't have a lot of them would be the Whiten Heights. So Joseph Road, I would say, would be an acceptable road of the three of them, but the other two, I would, I would say with what's taken place and where they're at with them, they wouldn't be ready for an acceptance.
Are the issues at Joseph Road going to be fixed before May's meeting?
He's going to be up there within a week to get that taken care of.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to pull Williams Circle and Whiten Heights from the warrant.
Second? Motion's been made by Mike, seconded by Hal. We need discussion on these. And I suppose we'll always have the opportunity to revisit Joseph Road if there's no effort going in.
Right.
If it's not done, we can pass over.
Right.
The contractor that did that site is a very reputable contractor, and I'm sure he'll take care of it. But I'll stay on top of it, make sure if there's going to be any issue, I can look forward now.
Yeah, if we pass it over, the meeting just goes quicker, to be honest, so.
Okay.
We didn't take a vote on it.
Is William Drive in the warrant? Did I hear Williams Circle?
I think William Drive is the name.
Oh, Williams Drive, I'm sorry. Amend my motions to Williams Drive.
Motion's been amended, and gladly accepted by Hal, I'm sure. Motion is for William Drive and Whiten Heights to be removed from the town meeting warrant at this time. All those in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, while we're on the subject, there seems to be a problem each and every year with these road acceptances. Is there any policy that's in our, under our policies that they have to have substantial completion in order to even be considered to get into it? Like Joseph Road has a few little cleanup things, but Whiten Heights had quite a few things when they came in the fall, we were going to follow up with them, kind of got overlooked a little bit. And here we are removing them off the warrant. So I think it would be helpful to the office staff if we tighten up that a little bit to make it a little further along in the process before we consider approving them to be on the warrant.
Yeah, no, see a problem with that? I do know in that particular matter, we were, yeah, relying on the advice of staff.
Well, I think it's a matter of how you conduct yourself personally and professionally, right? So as far as I'm concerned, the administration's responsibility to the select board, as the intervening reviewers from the planning board, as it comes over to you, is that nothing should come to the warrant unless the entire checklist is fully checked off and every last task is taken care of. There is no other way to access the warrant. I think community development directors' motivations were not wrong, in the sense from a customer service point of view, wanted to have a relationship and be able to use access to the warrant as leverage to get those last few tasks done.
Yeah.
But lesson learned, no, we did them. And in the case of William Drive, like I said, the flaw was fatal. The roadway is on some guy's property. So there's going to be a whole heck of a lot of reckoning that needs to be done. And due diligence would have revealed that. So that should never have come to you. Whiten, I think you can go either way on Whiten, because the contractor, I think, really has expressed a sincere desire to finish the work. Again, it comes down to common sense. Town meeting's going to vote on May 5th. When are you going to get out there and finish this work in the construction season? And are you, how high of a priority is this for you? And it just isn't. So I'm confident they'll do the work, but they didn't get it done in time for town meeting. And frankly, a deadline's a deadline in private sector. You just, you hit your deadlines. If you don't, you could be fired or get in trouble. I don't know why we would ever be in a rush to accept a road that's not finished, because the town and its taxpayers have to pay to maintain it forever. So if it's built wrong in the first place, it's going to be, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, but Sunset is an example of just how bad things can go. So just drive down the street a little ways and go up that hill and see, you know, what we didn't get when we had the leverage. So I'm, personally, my pledge, and when we get a new community development director, and we're going to make it abundantly clear, that nothing comes to the warrant unless all the boxes have been checked on the list. Which was the leverage thing doesn't work.
Yeah, that in and of itself is probably more leverage. Having said that, you know, we're making this on the chair and then, and even after we signed the warrant, there's still some wiggle room. So I don't fault the community development director for pushing that forward, because I think we probably asked them to, you know, because we thought leverage was going to be enough, but it's not.
Well, they're looking to blame anybody.
He's trying to close projects.
Just to, the ownership's on the developer, whoever, they get their stuff.
And come back in the...
Ready, then be accepted.
Is that...
No, it's only annuals.
Only annuals, okay. It's being corrected.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so this...
Just another year.
Well, they got more of a way to finish their projects.
Yeah.
I agree with that. You got a checklist, you don't even come, you haven't really approached the warrant until everything's checked off. That makes it easier.
All right. Thank you for that.
Thanks.
We removed those two. Anything else while we've got the warrant open? So, these Green Communities DOE R grant and the Community Planning Grant Program and the Master Plan?
We can talk about them if you want, but they don't really have an impact on the warrant.
No, I know.
Yeah, it was just after they opened the warrant, before we closed it, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I didn't see it on the warrant. So we go back to that. So there you have it, is our draft warrant.
Make a motion to close the warrant.
Mike makes a motion to close the warrant.
Second.
Seconded by Ross. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that is the product. It's on the agenda for May 5th. Do you want to review it now?
It's up to you.
Let's do the Green Communities DOE R grant. Number seven.
So, Mr. Chairman, as this is the routine, to fill out some paperwork here to accept grants that have been awarded to the town, we received notice that Green Communities program is going to fund an LED lighting upgrade fixture replacement at the Douglas Middle School, giving us $100,000 toward that. These lighting projects at the schools are big winners. They pay them back within a couple of years after. The second is, we were awarded this grant quite a long time ago, and I think we announced it.
Announced, but not accepted.
But we didn't do the formal acceptance. So the town did receive $115,000 from the Community Planning Grant Program to support our Master Plan Committee and its efforts. So those are the two pieces.
I'm thinking of motion to accept the Green Communities DOE R grant and Community Planning Grant Program for the Master Plan.
Motion's been made by Les.
Second.
Seconded by Hal. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And now we are, we don't belong to talk about that in the annual town meeting. With that is the special. Jean, do you want to come up? Are you a part of our conversation here? You are now.
Always happy to join you.
All right, so what are we looking at?
Are you running through the warrants? So are you just doing an overview? Are you going to start with the special?
I have the special on my hand.
Okay. The special is actually pretty clean. Just a reminder that at this time of year, we try to address any budgetary needs to get us through June 30. I meet with the departments and talk with them on any circumstances that required a budget transfer. Anything at this town meeting requires a transfer from another department. You can no longer raise and appropriate, so it has to come from somebody to give to somebody or use free cash or stabilization. So Article 1, again, addresses those needs, and it gives both the increases as well as the transfers. The only one that's not from a department is the transfer from receipts reserved for appropriation from the ambulance to fund the ambulance wage line of 27,000. So if it's, do you want to go through each one, or do you just want that broad overview?
What's the will of the board? Anything pique your interest? Yeah, no, I think we're going to go over this with the town moderator at some point, right? So they'll have that discussion as well.
Article 2 is the snow and ice transfer. This is a transfer from free cash in the amount of 175,000. That's the amount that's been proved as a deficit spend amount. That money will be transferred from free cash. If they don't use the full 175, it will close into free cash at the end of the fiscal year. Article 3 and 4 are prior bills. The town is not allowed to pay a bill from last fiscal year unless it's been encumbered. In these two instances, one from the town side, one from Enterprise Fund Water Sewer, these bills came to light after the books are closed and after the encumbrance was completed. That's why town meeting needs to improve them.
Okay.
We're already pinning you back a little bit.
No, it's coming from retail.
Coming from them.
All right.
There's no kidding.
Good try, though.
So we're up to 256.
For the record, he had good intentions.
That's a hard no.
I tried, fellas. All right, and then the Enterprise Fund, Con Ed, that's retained earnings.
Is that, that's an electric bill?
It is. It is. Part of the confusion with that is normally we add up, make sure we have 12 electric bills that we pay. In this particularly, our, actually, the Solifon was down a couple months, so, and with the transition of staff, it just got missed. It was caught later.
All right, this is a breeze. Onto the annual. Finance has been working diligently. Pleased with the discussion so far and creation or concerns of the budget.
Yep.
Yep.
I kind of wish it looked different, but wishful thinking gets you not even a cup of coffee these days.
Anything in the first few articles, Jean, that has a story you want to share?
I don't think anything's changed since the last time it was presented to the board. I think the structure has maintained the same. I think the only discussion was Article 22, and the board decided to put that forward. But I don't believe the budget document, the sixth page, has changed.
Oh, the stabilization account, yeah. Okay.
That was the only addition from the last time, right? Yeah.
Just a question to the Chair. This article, we need to, underneath the, we really have planning board, 15, three and a half?
We don't run a 53 and a half anymore out of the planning board. We use 53Gs.
Yeah.
So we use the outside consultant. If staffing changes, we may have to add that back on.
Yeah, just remember it being two different kind of...
Yeah, there used to be three listed. You're correct. Yeah.
I've had a couple committee members here, but the storm law to bylaw and that, anyone want to speak to that? Les or Colin? Satisfied with the product that's here?
Yeah, we are, just speaking on that storm law bylaw, and we need to back to the edits and something that we missed, and got that over to Lisa. We make the warrant lines for the edits and stuff like that, and the maps reflected the data we discussed and stuff like that.
Is this the map that's going to be printed? Is that...
Yeah. That's from our Nick, who was our storm law management consultant. He also does storm law planning for the town, works with Adam in the highway department.
Is this online anywhere, where people can zoom in?
Yeah, we can, because it's a PDF, but...
It will be online. I can put it on there.
The conversation, Mr. Chairman, with the moderator, since he does tend to put things on the big screen, is to make sure the map, he has, is good enough resolution where people see it.
Yeah.
And just to add about the map, the maps related to the town's drainage, you know, it's a part of your property or it's in the street, and that's what the map. So the map is from the drainage from the Nick, our consultant, so it ties into the town drainage, so budding properties and stuff like that. So those were the ones that were identified versus a townwide map that some communities did and are still trying to unring that bell, so.
Good. Any other thoughts from the board or questions? Again, we can do a deeper dive with the town moderator.
I think there was one more whole Article 20. We did add the language to that after your last meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that was reviewed by council.
I think that's going to be a fixed amount. I don't think you'd have part thereof on the fines.
It's going to be in the regs. That's what we, we're going to by council. No question. The regs have all the.
What I had just pointed out to him typically fines or fixed amount. And it said a portion.
It's going to be covered in the regs.
A portion, but it said he's cleared it to town council. Yeah.
The thinking there was probably that the regs can be amended more easily than the bylaw.
Yeah. But authorize, authorizes up to.
Up to.
The planning authority?
Planning board.
Nice to have a little wig over it, but, you know, $500 bucks a day.
Well, yeah, and other ones we had were restricted to having a fixed amount. That's the only reason I brought it up.
So Article 20, that's new language. That feels pretty progressive. Someone's working on the holiday regardless of your status. You should probably recognize that. It's cool.
A class of employees added here is called.
Dispatch.
Merry Christmas. Now go put out the fire.
Yeah, dispatch.
Okay, good. So with this as our document, do we need a motion to agree to sign? Annual town meeting?
Yeah, make a motion to approve and sign the annual town meeting and the special town meeting warrants as presented.
Been made by Mike? Yeah.
The project to do, the gazebo, you put that in anywhere?
The budget?
Yeah.
They were doing that as private fundraising and stuff like that.
No, they, they.
That's what I thought.
They were raised money for the irrigation, but they were looking for the town to do as part of the total project to do the painting.
Oh, gazebo?
Gazebo.
They're coming back.
Yeah.
So how would we fund it? That's the question. Not in the capital budget.
We have to ask for it.
It didn't come before capital.
It didn't come before capital. The thing is, I would not be able to put it in the operating. Because I was skinning teeth to get through the operating.
The what? Oh, I think we have to let the dust settle over the next couple meetings to really decide whether. We've got some additional funds to deploy around town.
Yeah, if we're, Mr. Chairman, just for a little clarity, as far as capital projects, we're in the process of trying to reevaluate the renovations to the Fire Department, the HVAC and the electrical upgrades. So the capital project was, for the most part, paused until the fall town meeting to see where we are with that particular project. Do we have to finish it? We went out the bid and we ended up over budget on the first go around. So the town administrator and trying to help him through it, look at the project again to see if we can slim it down to get in budget, so.
Yeah, the thing, Mr. Chairman, and this goes, I'm sure we'll discuss this the night of town meeting, but as we exit the health insurance group, we will leave on June 30 and be on our own as of July 1. But most of our June claims won't arrive until after July. It's called the runout. Now, under the agreement, the runout of claims should be paid by the group and netted against what they owe us as from our surplus. Because the group's financial condition is a negative equity balance, they don't have the money. So in an abundance of caution, we have frozen most of our capital planning because we may need to use free cash to support our own claims. Now, we're still working with Rich Bowen on other solutions to this problem. And I will probably be coming before you, probably in executive session, to discuss how we are going to establish what the group owes the town of Douglas because we don't necessarily feel strongly about allowing the treasurer of the group to unilaterally declare what that number is. We may need some help establishing what that number is, and it may not be cheap. But it may be well worth it if we're talking about seven digits. So all of that uncertainty, the responsible thing to do is to hold back sufficient resources to stay liquid through all of this and work it out rather than commit a whole lot of funds to projects only to find out that you're getting a bill for your claims because those have to be paid.
Yeah, ultimately, we're responsible for them.
Yeah, those are our.
These are the claims under the new, the old policy. So we can't just tell them, we know you've got a bunch of our money, take it from that?
If they had the money in the bank, that would be my position. But our surplus exists as a legal claim. But their bank balance is negative. They don't, there is no money.
So are we talking about that tonight? All right, I lost track. There was a motion for something and then.
To approve and sign the annual town meeting warrant and the special town meeting warrant. Then Al had his question. So you'll look over a second.
Mike made it, seconded by Ross. Any further discussion on this fine piece of legislation? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you have it.
The only request that I would make at this time, and it could have been before that vote, is to change the heading from TA Proposed to Board of Selectmen Recommend. This will be going before the Finance Committee, the six-page document.
Oh.
The other thing that will happen to this is the BBT portion will be removed from this main article, this main budget, because it's its own article. So that kind of gets removed from this and then moved down.
So what's the motion you want? You want a.
Change the chart from TA Proposed to.
If it's your will to recommend his proposal, then we want to make sure that the heading reflects that when it goes into the town meeting flyer.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend my motion to include that we change the heading from TA Proposed to.
Board of Selectmen Recommend.
Board of Selectmen Recommended Budget.
This has been made by Mike.
I will second again.
Seconded by Ross. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for catching that, Gene.
It's a good time with the budget in my hand, Matt. Do we want to bounce to the budget discussion?
One of those, what do you want to know kind of moments that we haven't already kind of tortured? My last minute changes were mostly an internal conversation with us around managing the accounting entries for debt. We do have non-excluded debt that is paid for out of the general fund. So I put that, I was able to capture that more in a more detailed and accurate fashion in the budget. It required us to make some assumptions about revenue that we were very comfortable making. So the balance, the budget remains balanced as presented in this spreadsheet that's in front of you. As I have said more than once, I'll say it again because I like saying it, that when you take all of the expenses attributed to managing the educational side of our expenditures, 98 cents of every new dollar is going to education. And we'll fight like the dickens for those last two pennies. Basically, your department heads came back with expense budgets that were trimmed so they could, we could honor our commitment to do a 2% COLA for our employees that was part of comp reform without actually changing the bottom line for general government, which I think is actually a negative number if you add up all the entries.
Is it in at 1.7?
So this document shows you 1.37 out of 1.7 go into education. Just remember that health insurance and property insurance are driven by the school department. They have far more employees and more buildings. So when we break out the premiums for those coverages, we get up to 98. From 86 to 98. So, oh, I should say, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I got to say this. We had anticipated at one time that tonight would be the night you would vote on your property and casualty insurance and that any savings generated from that conversation could have been reprogrammed by the Select Board or the Finance Committee. But because we've postponed that conversation to April 15, this budget has the Maya renewal, because they are the incumbent, that we estimated, because they told everybody to do this, at 3.5% more than last year's premium. Right? So that's the, they never give us a number. We're always scrambling at the last minute to get them to put a number into our budget. So this year, that's what we're carrying forward. So if you make a change on April 15 that results in savings to the town, that's a conversation for special in November.
Now, that's where the opportunity maybe can be found. Well, the other thing, too, we run afoul of MCP, MSHG. We had some of that. So these next couple meetings are going to be really important ultimately. That's where it's at. Is there a department that took a particularly hard hit today that we should at least be aware of? Where the cuts maybe were punitive when they shouldn't have been?
I wouldn't say that because the majority of what I was able to trim from the original proposal draft, call it draft, is I've just decided not to fund the facilities manager. So that took just about $85,000 worth of salary out. So I was about $173,000 in deficit. So I got 85 of it by cutting that position. And I think the other place where I feel like we had to be heavy-handed was forestry, so I zeroed out forestry. There is no money in this budget for cutting trees in the public right of way. We usually primarily fund that in November anyway. But we put enough in the budget to allow a contract to be signed so we can go out to bid and get a price and then sign a contract because it's a, we pay them on a daily basis for work actually completed. And we can't sign a contract if we don't have any money in the budget. So we are delaying that procurement to the fall, which is going to set us back a little bit.
Adam came into the meeting.
What's that?
Said he has 85 dead trees and he had two weeks left of work obligated. So there is a need for that to be replenished if we can.
Oh, yeah, it's a priority because it really does affect the quality of life of Douglas residents. You've had far fewer power outages as you, along with National Grid, take out all these dead trees. It's a noticeable difference.
If you look at the side of the roads, I don't know if it took three years for things to wither away, but they're starting to fall. My backyard's got a bunch of pancake.
Wasn't that long ago we had the tree that collapsed on South Street?
Yep.
Those people were lucky.
Yeah.
I'd go out there and do it, but the odds of coming back with a thigh or two thighs.
So look at the story from Wes Walworth, the guy cutting a branch to help his neighbor. The branch fell on him and killed him. The services of an arborist should not be underestimated.
No, for sure. But noted, I think that, yeah, it was important. It's not clear, but that's important, especially in times of storm. National Grid, anticipate a presence with them this year.
Yeah, they've, Adam's not here to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if we look at their last four or five years of program, they're over $1 million.
Okay.
But in terms of anybody getting a big hit, and of those, I pretty much covered it as I looked through the numbers myself one last time. We made some last-minute reductions to part-time staff at Highway, but they were all, they were justified by the budget inquiry. Whenever you see a reduction in veterans' benefits, because there is a reduction here of $15,000, that is driven by the actual population of people who are eligible for the benefit. It's not a reduction for the sake of reducing the budget. So, because I would never do that, just be honest, be clear about it. But the population of, a lot of our veterans are getting older and passing away. And that's, so when I started with the town, that account was like 55, 65,000, and we're down to 25,000.
And the town gets reimbursed 75% of what we pay out in the following fiscal year.
Other than that, I think that covers it. I did have a, since it is a budget item, I'm feeling confident that the 12% increase in our health insurance premium or working rate, call it that, is in line with the market. And I am told builds in any necessity for us to capitalize our account. So in other words, to get a little bit of a nest egg started and be able to have a cushion between us and nothing, it's built into the 12%. So the underwriters actually would not have passed along that big of an increase on our rate. They bumped us up to 12%. It's all built into the rate. So every month as we pay, we'll be hopefully running a small surplus at the end of the year as a decent amount of money.
I think it was last year we invested a little bit more in the library and got an extra night out of it. That, oh, commitments like that remain unchanged.
Right.
Great. Do we want to put Board of Selectmen Approves or Proposed or Endorsed? Recommended?
Recommended.
On this budget? I do.
Yep. Agreed.
That was a vote that we took.
Yeah.
Yeah, I meant at the direction of the Finance Director.
You did.
Before she came out with the red pen.
The interesting thing is, we didn't really endorse it. We endorsed the column. But I think people know what we're looking to do. All right, I'm all over the place. What else is there, Gene? Anything before we maybe send you home? I know you won't go home, but.
I think that dismisses me from the table. I may see you on 18.
Yeah, okay, cool. All right. Moving right along, let's go to item number 11 for minutes. March 4 to March 18. What do you think about the March 4 minutes, Hal?
It's the Socratic method now. It's getting nasty.
No, nothing retained?
Nope. Motion made by Hal, seconded by Les. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye abstained. Because I was absent.
And Mike abstains. Onto March 18.
I want to make a motion to approve the March 18, 2025, and it says right.
Second.
Wait, by less, second by Mike, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Matt, I saw in your packet, you may have some items in regards to the property and casualty discussion.
Yes. I'll do that now. Trying to make myself useful around here, I tried to finish and didn't, but I will circulate the finished copy during the week. Just a basic background memo on what it is you're looking at on April 15th. We won't have the actual proposals from MIA and from whatever competitors bid on that work, on that contract, until April 11th. So on April 11th, when your packet is sent to you, you will get the proposals from those entities. I have asked them, however, to withhold price. So I don't want to start, for lack of a better word, a poopstorm over all of the pricing and all, and then the presentation to you turns into, well, he's underpricing this and he's under. I want them to go through their programs, what they're gonna cover, what deductibles, what exclusions, what terms, so that you understand the product. And then at some point in their presentation, they disclose the price. And I will give you a score sheet, so that you can write all this stuff down, keep it organized, as well as some questions that you can ask if you choose to. But I thought since two of the five members of the board weren't here the last time we went through this, there's just some basic facts about our relationship with MIA, and I'll go through it real fast, that you should know, because it's complicated. There are lots and lots of moving parts. So there's, each packet I give you should be handed over until we get.
No, altogether, no.
This is always an exercise. I made enough. I know I did. There's five of you. One of the things I think that folks, that you guys need to be aware of, is that MIA is a membership service of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, the MMA. I think at least two of you have been to the conference. And the executive director of the MMA is the president of MIA. So Adam Chapdeline, who is our executive director, former Arlington Town Manager, is the president of MIA. And all of MIA's individual trust funds and stop-loss relationship are governed by boards that are populated with all the same people. So there may be four boards of five members each, there's not 20 different people. It's the same five people, I don't know, four boards. And they're more or less handpicked members of the Town Managers Association, there might be one assistant town manager. And they make decisions about the finances of MIA. There are about 400 municipal entities that purchase some form of coverage from MIA. MIA is the largest health insurance buying group for municipalities and municipal entities. So they are just about $657 million in revenue. MSHG, by comparison, was about 180. So that gives you a sense of how big MIA is. MIA is very large. And they place Blue Cross. On the property casualty side, it isn't a one-off relationship with a self-funded trust fund. That's not how it works. It's, it's an aggressive program, it's an intelligently managed program, I'm not gonna just cast dispersions on the way they organize this. Certain lines are supported by a self-insured trust fund. Other lines are placed with fully insured carriers. Because the feeling, it seems, from the MIA leadership, is that some of those financials are very volatile. So rather than trying to manage it in their own trust fund, they buy a fully insured product from a national company and try to get us a better rate for those things. So your property damage and liability is a self-insured trust fund, there's a special state statute to manage that. There's also a workers' compensation, self-insured trust fund. But injured on duty, which is not only medical, but lost wages compensation to first responders, is carried by Chubb. Chubb is one of the larger insurance companies. It's going to be very interesting to see how Chubb positions itself in this conversation two weeks from now. Because there is a good chance they might bid for the whole package. So normally, Chubb is exclusive through MIA for IOD, but they may be waiving that in order to get the whole business. So you may actually have a series of choices to make about who you work with, that may be constrained on their end by, well, we can't just sell you this line or that line, you gotta take our whole package so we don't violate an agreement that we have with MIA. So just be aware of that. Professional liability, self-insured trust. Cyber liability is fully insured through a company called Tokyo Marine, which tends to be one of the more, one of those companies that, that is willing to accept high levels of risk, like Lloyds of London is more famous, because they, they're in the business. Police liability is, from what I can tell, is a self-insured trust fund. Inland Marine, we do not have this line broke out separately, because we don't run any boats big enough to trigger that special coverage. So this is covered in our fleet. So all of our, our inflatable boat and our rescue boat are too small, so they're in the fleet, covered.
Is the inland marine only restricted to watercraft? Because on my liability policy, they call it inland marine, that covers all my equipment.
I'm not sure.
So you might want to check into that, because it's just a term that, that they label it with. But I'm like, why do I have inland marine? I don't have a boat. No, it's all your tools, all right, so.
I've run into them before, and they do other things, too.
Yeah.
Maybe that's how they get started.
Oh, you're talking about Tokyo Marine, he's talking about the name of the line.
Inland Marine is a, is a section of your liability insurance.
But we don't have, I guess, the only point I'm trying to make is that our exposure to needing special insurance for watercraft isn't triggered because we don't have any watercraft big enough.
Right, but.
Whether it's called inland marine or something else, I call it that.
It may also cover your, your, your equipment, such as the hot box or the jumping jack compact of play.
So some of that's gonna be, some of that's in our, so I know where it is, MIA. Some of that is in our property damage and liability coverage, because it's on the declaration.
Right.
We also have a category in our declaration called miscellaneous. And we have a lot of stuff in that category, because it's all very valuable to the town, but they may be smaller items. And that would include any antiquities or things that we hold on to, just because they're old. We don't even know what they're worth, but we insure them, to some, to some extent. Vacant buildings, each building has its own liability coverage. I'm not exactly sure, because they used to all be through Lloyds. Because when I started here, I, I thought that was funny, that we had, the old school building was so risky, we had to get Lloyds. But now it's Scottsdale Insurance, Evanston Insurance, and Mount Vernon Insurance. Scottsdale is 11 Arnold, Evanston, I believe, is 11 Gleason, and Mount Vernon is the old 21 Me. So the challenge for the broker, who is not the MIA broker, is to make sure he's giving you a package that covers all of these risks. Because that is what we get from MIA. And I think we've been very clear with him that that's his task. So I don't like the idea of saying you're comparing apples to apples, because it's gonna be messy. People are gonna fool around with deductibles and exclusions and caps, and at the end of the day, you will have to make a decision on how the package fits together and whether or not you feel that that's the best value for the town. Some of these coverages are very different from each other. Workers' comp, for instance, I mean, it's a completely different process from property liability.
This time around, we're doing them separately, right? We're not doing it like we did last time.
Correct. So the bidders will be sequestered in the community room, they will not hear each other. All, they, it's a public meeting. So once they're done their presentations, they can all be in the room to listen to your deliberation.
Yeah.
But the floor is closed.
Right.
And I, and I would respectfully ask.
It was a little humorous, but it was kind of.
It was a little bit silly. I would respectfully ask the board not to have them, allow them to speak after their presentation's done, because it just turns it into a foolish throw-out. I've attached to this preliminary memo just a, just a quick overview of MIA. This is from their membership portal, so I had to log in to get this, so. It is a public document, but I wouldn't throw it around all over the place. But it gives you a sense of how they're running. And your primary focus is the first page, the top page. So their property liability, property and casualty group, their total assets are $335 million. This year, they, I'm trying to get the proper number here. Their net position at the end of the year was $196 million. So their consolidated statement of cash flow gives you a sense of what, how they manage their cash. So it's, it's not the biggest, not the biggest fund that you can imagine. So I'm sorry, their revenues are $103 million, their assets are $335 million. So I mean, they have this nest egg, right? But so I'm looking for their transfer from reserves, because they did have a negative number in here. They handed out some dividends, half a million. There are no other negative numbers. Now, just for giggles, if you look at their health trust, just for giggles, just to see what's going on in the world, they really spent down their reserves. So their excess of revenues over expenses is a negative number. So in 2023, they drained reserves to almost $25 million, and 2024, it was $9 million. So they are in a deteriorating financial condition, because they, the trust balance at the end of the year, at the beginning of 2023 was $216 million, by the end of 2024, so it's 24 months later, they were at $182 million. They're doing better than MSHG, but it's nothing to crow about. Everybody's getting hit pretty hard. So what I'll add to this is more or less a glossary of terms, because I want to make sure that these guys don't talk over all of our heads. Probably the most important that you may not encounter in your own business life, with IOD, there's what became very important in our last conversations, called an exclusionary period. So in other words, some insurers will say, thank you for your claim, and we're not gonna pay anything on that claim for a certain number of days. It's another way of, of basically creating a deductible, but it's not tied to a dollar amount, it's tied to the, the injury type. And I think there's a gamble there that a certain number of injuries are minor enough where the, the employee returns to work before the exclusionary period is over. The exposure for the town, unfortunately, is, in a case of an acute injury, we would be on the hook for a large portion of it. So that was a major conversation point our last time we shopped this business, because the only bidder we got for IOD, other than Chubb through MIA, was a company called Vfis, V F I S, that had a very aggressive exclusionary period. It exposed the town of us to too much risk, and it was one of the major planks for rejecting. At the time, it was Gallagher that was the broker, and the package was basically Travelers plus Vfis. So this, lastly, where we stand, we think there are as many as five major carriers that have expressed an interest in bidding on this through the broker. I think two, maybe three, will actually materialize by April 15th. One of the questions I have for the broker is, are you going to be able to mix and match? So can you build a structure like MIA has with fully insured products? So if Travelers is gonna give us the best deal on property damage and liability, but Chubb gives us the best deal on IOD and workers' comp, are you gonna be able to pull those pieces together? Or are they gonna say, this is our package, take it or leave it? In which case, you would have multiple options to choose from, but none of them might necessarily be competitive, price-wise. So that's, that'll be the trick.
What, à la carte?
Yeah.
You mean, à la carte, like?
Cafeteria style, yeah.
Which is, they can choose, take this one and, you know, what's the benefit?
The, the, we had last time, the other competing insurance company was Gallagher, and they couldn't provide Chubb, which was an important piece. And that's actually where they fell apart very quickly.
Yeah. So I'm trying to get you a broker this time, I made sure I got a broker that is allowed to write Chubb.
April 15th, we get presented to. Right. Have to digest that, and I'm certain our eyes are gonna be glazed over.
Oh, your pulse is gonna quicken.
Yeah.
Will not be a short meeting.
Is it important to look to see who they're reinsuring with for larger claims, or?
I would absolutely say that's very important.
So that's April 15th, right? Clearly, we have some time to digest.
And so now, there's no rush to vote either. So, I mean, if you absolutely feel as a board that you don't need to, don't want to vote on April 15th, it's not gonna be in the budget.
Yeah.
Right? It's, it's not driving a budget discussion. So at that point, if you wanted to wait, ask more questions, you could.
Is there a particular time limit that we should set, for an expectation of when?
Well, if you want the coverage to lock in on July 1st, you, you can't wait forever.
Right.
I'd say mid-May.
Yeah. So within the two, two meetings in May, they're done?
They have a lot of work to do if, if they're picked.
Bob, don't go too, too far.
Aw, jeez.
Yeah, I just want to pick your brain for a second.
On the April 15th, we also have to look at either Warren or Comodore as well.
Yeah.
So it might be.
Pack of lunch.
Yeah.
Oh, you could start at 6:30 if you wanted, give you a little bit of a start.
Say, that might even be an idea.
Yeah.
No, I'm fine with 6:30. So at the latest, mid-May?
Try the second meeting in May?
Yeah, we have to have.
I, I feel like I'm speaking with somebody else who's not here with better information than me. I would hope they'd be able to do that.
Yeah. Well, we can find out if we have to, I don't know if we're available to meet off week and maybe do it. I'm just looking at the calendar.
So town meeting's the fifth, you, you have a meeting before town meeting, that's just traditional.
Yeah, that gets you deep into the month. All right, so we may end up having a.
Hey, wow, 5/20/25. Play the lottery that day.
Yeah, do it. Just looking at the calendar, fellas, we're looking at town meeting on May 5th, we do meet that day. May 6th is a natural meeting, probably, when's election? So that day typically, we don't meet. So it might have to be the 6th, day after town meeting.
It's an important.
Yeah.
Thing to get done, so.
Yeah, the only other option is to meet on.
I'd keep it the 6th. That way, it gives the insurance guys plenty of time to do their thing.
Are we meeting on the 29th of April? That's the 3rd. That's the 3rd.
It's not scheduled, but-
You could.
Yeah. I don't want to not get into this exciting topic, I'll be away then, that Tuesday.
What, the 6th?
No, the 29th. So, let's, all right, May 6th is the day.
You should be here for that.
Cool, May 6th is the day, we circled our calendar. Worst-case scenario, potentially plan on a 13th meeting as an auxiliary.
13th is the election.
That's right. So, May-
May 6th, it is.
It is. It has been cast in stone.
April 15th at 6:30, right? We're getting ready on that.
Good. All right, anything else on that, Matt?
That's it.
All right, cool. Bob, I see you in the audience, and this has been on our agenda for some time. Oftentimes, it's just there as a placeholder in case something quick and fast and exciting happens. Not to put you on the spot, but I'm gonna. How does the Pine property look? And what do you think of the municipal light plant discussion to date? And is there anything needed from us at this point to-
As far as the Pine property, talking with Andy Leonard this morning, he was expecting a phone call from Frank Bakounis today. I did not get any follow-up on that before this meeting. It is almost there. They almost have regained site control. Once they do that, we've made it perfectly clear that the data center is our preferred project, as opposed to warehouses. Looking through all the data on warehouses, the climate is not there to support warehouses. We're lucky to get a client for this one. CIG's warehouse in Plainville doesn't even have a hit. It's, it's empty, and it's probably going to stay that way for a while. So, we're kind of fairly lucky right now that we have a tenant that's very interested in this, in this property, the cubes. With that said, I don't think they'll be going forward with warehouses on the Pine property. Yes, they could build one, we would gain some tax revenue out of it. But if it remains empty, it's, it's almost a waste of time. Data centers, well, it's a longer project, but I think in the end, it'll be probably ending construction about the same time a warehouse would be, if it was occupied. The revenue out of a data center is probably 10 times what it is out of a warehouse. I've talked to the minister, Mr. Woljak, on this, and it's, it's just the way the town wants to go right now. The assessors offices involved in these calculations. So, we will find out, the pieces are there. We've got a battery storage system, contemplating, proposing a battery storage system as a backup for the power. We're working with National Grid. There is a, an SSA form, which is a survey form for National Grid. CIG has said they would pay for that, that's a $250,000 item. So, if they pay for that, it's a one-year study, we probably know the answer. They can give us power within six to seven years. They might surprise us, we might phase it, where you could build one building with 100 megawatts of power, which, by the way, for the equivalent, is the city of Brockton, they use 100 megawatts of power. One building on a data center will be one city's worth of power. These things are power hungry. We could fit probably 10 buildings on that site, which you're looking, build out probably a gig, gig of water power, which you're approaching the city of Boston for, for that data center. The data center in Springfield is a similar case, same acreage, same wattage, same buildings, same footprint, on a gas line. I think they're dealing with, I think they're dealing with National Grid out there for both. I think grid is doing both gas and electric out there.
It might be.
As opposed, we have EverSource for gas and National Grid for electric. If they can give us power and phase in, bring in 100 watts every year, we build a building every year, we're happy. This thing can get off the ground. The pieces are there, we just need to get site control to unlock the dam.
And when we need to finish the business case to give to you to consider. We're pulling the elements together, because it's complicated. There are a lot of moving parts, lots of different kinds of assets. And I don't necessarily think that it has to be one or the other. I think you'll have options for how that mix goes. But I 100% agree with Bob, and there just isn't a good market for warehouses. Now, for 46 years, I lived about a mile and a half away from that Plainville site. And if anybody had asked me, I would have told them, nobody wants a warehouse in that site in Plainville.
With the top area.
It's a really tough spot to move traffic. So, it was a dunderheaded idea, no offense to Frank, but I don't think it was a good idea. And I feel the same way about Holliston, I don't know why anybody would want to. It's just, it's that small town, but highly congested setup. You know, Plainville, you've got Route 1A and Route 1 coming together, and-
But you gotta go by the, rent them outlets to get the 495, you're just-
Yeah.
Not, not a good mix for truck traffic.
And a couple of residential roads, we're back.
Right, yeah.
146 is much better connectivity to everything. Because 495, you're going to go a long way before you get to a junction with a major roadway. But 146, you're going to 95 in one direction, 295 if you want to get around the mess, and the Pike. So, it's, this is a way, way better location. To build the business, so this is where we're being nuanced, trying to be careful about our conversations. Building the business case for people to review and consider requires taking the conversation to a point where somebody will say, "I'm not wasting my time, I'll give you the numbers." So, Chris Pupka has done as much analysis as he can on the revenue impact on those communities in Massachusetts where some of these things have been built. And we're still pushing forward with building the business case, because the numbers are really compelling, like stupid compelling. And we know that a development of that size would probably force the table to have a conversation about incentives that we have always said no to. But once you start to talk numbers of the size that we could be looking at here, it would be worthwhile to figure out what is our appetite for incremental adds to the project to get to the point where. There's definitely some shallow waters to navigate with our state government in how the state government wants to configure energy usage across the Commonwealth. I'm afraid that we may find ourselves testing the boundaries of diplomacy on this one, where the eastern part of the state has a really strong, particular point of view towards large, energy-hungry developments versus the center and western part of the state, where, you know, we don't want to be left behind, and we're the ones with the best greenfield sites for development, where people can get in and out, and you're not smack dab in the middle of a residential neighborhood in a well-established, wealthier community. So, yeah, the idea of building a data center in Brookline is beyond stupid, it's not happening. So, that being the case, you know, conversation with our state delegation, as well as maybe even members of our federal delegation, or federal authorities of different kinds, will be fully engaged. Take careful note of minor, but kind of important events happening around us all. So, there's a conversation in my old hometown, the place where I grew up, Cumberland, Rhode Island, about building a hydro power, half-meg facility at the Manville Dam. If you're familiar with Manville, Cumberland's side, it's Flat Street, comes up to Manville Hill Road and the Manville Hill Road. That's the old site of the Jenks Mill. So, Manville was a village mill town. Jenks Mill is long since gone, but the dam was there for water power. These guys want to build a half-meg plant. If you read the local newspaper, it's the Valley Breeze, read the local newspaper, the mayor and all the environmentalists in town, "Oh, my God, you can't disturb the Blackstone River," God forbid. Because that's some sort of, looks like the Serengeti, I guess, some sort of wildlife refuge on the Blackstone. Not to make light of it, the Blackstone has recovered a lot. But the point is, at some point, you have to decide whether you're going to say no to every single energy facility ever considered, because it doesn't fit with your notion of your immediate neighborhood. And if we, if we nimbie the thing to death, we'll never have enough power to run the place. Enter the federal actor known as FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. So, the town of Cumberland got a rude awakening, because they were all upset about this possibility of hydro power. FERC says, "Yeah, okay, thank you, here's the permit." And where is that hydro plant going to go? Guess who owns the property? The town of Cumberland. They didn't even get notice. FERC just said, "Here's the permit, do the study, all set." So, that's how the federal government can work. And we did the same thing, I think I've told this story in more than one forum in town, I'll tell it again. In my neighborhood in Westport, everybody was unified against the cell tower. Didn't want the cell tower that nears Westport Point and the ocean and all the rest of it, it's ugly. And the town unanimously voted against it, the board of selectmen was up in arms, zoning board gave no relief. And, you know, it looked like the landowner was sunk. And the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, said, "Yeah, thanks for your input, but here's what they're building." Right? And I'm in my backyard, and I look up, and I see a cell tower with more antennas on it than anybody ever anticipated. It's very lucrative. The dude who's got it on his property is probably making 300 grand a year. But the point is, you can do all you want, but at some point, if you get on somebody's radar screen, you're not going to have a choice. I don't know if that, we're necessarily headed directly in that direction, but to not acknowledge that possibility would be irresponsible. I think the other possibility here-
Sorry, go ahead.
I'll just finish with one, with one thought, quick paragraph. Not to be sound too much like a, I'm not speculating. I have confidence in what I'm saying, it's just I don't have a whole lot of documentation. But artificial intelligence will increasingly become part of the national security equation, because it's, it generates an awful lot of analytical power in a short period of time. So, those nations that develop their own AI models and can perfect them and work them into their national defense security are going to have a stronger position in the world scene. And there is a time and a place when, as powerful as FERC and the FCC are, our national security concerns can become very paramount. So, really, how it all fits together is way over my head, that's Elon Musk stuff. But at the end of the day, there is a reason why one of the first press conferences President Trump did was with the AI industry to announce a program to push them forward. Because the prospect of falling behind the Chinese or the Russians or others in this particular area is too frightening to contemplate, because their worldview is not ours. That's, that's back there. But getting back to the practicality, so let's not get too far afield with forecasting the future. The practicality is that you have a really great site. And so, it offsets the cost of doing business in Massachusetts, which is already much higher than much of the rest of the country. But because you have a great site, you still bubble up to the top. And this is what we found with Project Dragonfly and the other leads that we chased in connection with that property previously, is that we're very competitive with national-scale sites in Georgia and other places that are much cheaper to do business in because of the connectivity that we have here.
If you're not familiar with Dragonfly, that was a project about five years ago, I think.
Yeah.
We didn't have a prayer in, should I say it, prayer in hell, I'm getting this job.
Basically, it was a biologic pharmaceutical manufacturing operation that was looking to locate in Massachusetts, looking to locate a factory. And Douglas was one of three finalists.
Finalist, and we, like I said, we didn't think we'd make it past the first round. We made it past the first round, second round, third round, we were one of three finalists, and we lost to Tennessee. I think we came in second, I think it was an honor to get past the first round. Never mind make it to the final round.
And it's because of the site.
Because of the site. And the Pine site with the data center right now is, I'm going to say, I'll go out on a limb, it's the best site on the East Coast. It's, it's 220 acres, it's a half a mile away from 13,000 volt lines, transmission lines. It has a Tennessee gas pipeline going through the property, and it's next to the interstate, and I believe there's high-speed internet cable in 146.
Your fiber network runs alongside 146.
It, it's the prime site, it's got all the elements. And all data centers throughout the country, I've been following them for six weeks now, they're going on gas pipelines, because the grid cannot supply power initially. And then those power centers become peaker plants for the grid, after the fact. Because these data centers have to go online within a couple of years.
I think you mentioned it was going to be six years before National Grid could-
It could be six, in some parts of the country, it's, it's 10-plus years before they can bring power into a site.
We staged it, and, you know, just one building, any idea of commitment?
That's what this study is for, and I can't wait till CIG to get site control, to get this study going.
And the second thing, obviously, if some other opportunity, a manufacturing plant came up while we're doing this, we could evaluate then whether we want to-
We could take advantage of that, that, again, that's, we don't have the site control.
And there's a lot that goes on, sorry, short of AI. You don't, talk about insurance, big insurance companies run data centers as well, processing claims, it's just smaller.
If they want our town business, then they should put the plant in.
Here's a chip about the size of your thumbnail that we can fit Douglas on.
Is there any expected, like, seed money or to kind of move this along? Or have to go do, or be aware of, like, that?
Not, we will have the infrastructure in place. The, the tank is, is half the project, the North Street, Street project is the Phase 2. That will be in place by the time they start these.
This is more shovel ready?
And another reason it's a perfect, it's shovel-ready. It's already flat, no trees, it's already an expired gravel pit. And CIG just formed a new division called Clayco Compute, which is just a data center division of, of building. It's not even a year old. So, Frank Bakounis is, of course, tapping into that. And they're aligned with the big boys, Microsofts.
Wonderful partners.
Yeah.
Really. I'll just put a bow on this to say that, you know, some of our budget tightening that we feel, like, this is why these discussions are really, really important, and why I was very pleased to support that article.
I'll have to agree with Mr. Woljak, that the numbers are mind-boggling. I'm used to working with millions, this is billions.
Great. All right, that's why we keep that on the agenda every so often, you have to help us move the needle a little bit.
And as far as the municipal, I know you mentioned municipal link power, Matt and I are still working on that. That's in progress.
Yeah, in my mind, that's all part of the same discussion.
Everything is dovetailed.
Anything for Bob before we move on? All right, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
How was the Maple surface?
Awful, worst, worst year I've ever had. Discussion for another-
Things have to get better, though.
All right, so 12, 14, 15, I have 13. This is a review or a discussion on the Board of Selectmen operating policy procedures. The document, it was included in our packet, so we can kind of know what this board is all about. The words of the document were created by previous boards. And I don't know, because of a situation a couple of weeks ago, Mike, you had asked for us to have- for us to have a discussion on board operating thoughts and policies, and I thought this would be the perfect opportunity to not only address your concerns, but take a first-pass review of this document, and we'll leave it at that for now, anyway. Did anyone get a chance to read that in the argument?
Not in full. But if we could get a little more time, I would need a little more time, anyway.
Yeah, sure. So we don't really, unless there's a strong desire to amend it, the document itself does call for a process. It is kind of subpar from state law, but it is a kind of a guiding document for us.
Mr. Chairman, the reason why I wanted to bring it forward is because sometimes we're not all aware of what the, the document even exists, first of all. And as everybody, as they first get on this board, sometimes, and their intentions are, they're good intentions, but sometimes you step outside the lines. I've done it, I'm sure that other members have done it as well. So it's good just to review this, to get everybody on the same page. It's very similar to the committee handbook that we, when the conservation ran until 1:45 in the morning, before we lost all our volunteers, it was a good chance to bring that up, clean it up, and get everybody on the same page with it. So that was my intention to bringing this to, to the surface, and I appreciate you putting it on this agenda.
While there are owners manuals, there isn't one when you get elected to the Board of Selectmen a lot, but it's figuring it out. And it is, not making a big deal out of the situation. I think we all have a little learning curve. It's best for this board to stay at that executive level, and very rarely do we have to dive down too, too deep. But the document's there. What I would do is, I want to be cognizant of our next meeting and the subject matter. But maybe if there's an amendment or an adjustment that needs to be made, we can maybe pick that up in May, end of May. So there's some time, unless, Les, do you have anything?
No.
That was good, pal.
Ross is going to read it.
While we're on the subject of policies, something that I've been thinking about for a little while, it may be a good practice for us to start getting into. I don't know how many policies we have, but if we can pick a couple of them a month at a particular meeting, just to review them, if there's no changes, there's no changes. But it'll do a couple of different things. It'll help us get, get familiar with the policies that are actually there, because you don't look them up until you have an issue, right? But to see if any are antiquated and have to be refreshed. So just a consideration for the rest of the board to see if something that you want to entertain.
I don't know, how many policies do we have?
Right? That's, that's kind of the point, right?
Maybe we only have two to look at, but it'd be a good chance to...
Right, like I say, some may not even be, be relevant anymore, you know?
Somewhere, there is a book.
Town clerk?
No, it would actually be in our office. And Suzanne had compiled it, because I remember looking at it. And there were quite a few. There was a free cash policy, there was an OPEB policy, there was a whole bunch of stuff.
Do you have to find this finder?
A lot of it, a lot of it was in Courier font, and, you know, there was correction ribbon marks on the paper. It's old, but some of it would still be relevant.
But some of it might not be, because of the strong administrative act, things change. So it...
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. And it keeps it fresh and on-line, too.
So just to recalibrate that a little bit, my suggestion, it had been ingrained in me some 15 years ago, is you got a question with the department head, with staff or anything, really the guy or the person to talk to would be the town administrator, and have everything funneled through him. That way, he knows all the, all the levers that are being pushed and pulled, and the ones that need to be pushed and pulled. And Matt, you're always accessible, so I don't see why you should ever deviate from that.
A thought process that helped me through the, through this, since I've been on, is I look at is, we only have one employee. All the rest fall under Matt. All the rest of the employees are Matt's employees, and the only one that we deal with is the town administrator. It's stuck in my head, so anytime that I have an issue or a question, I always talk to Matt. And typically, I'll start off the conversation, if I'm not where I'm supposed to be, tell me and I stop. Because I'm trying to be respectful of his position, not overstep my bounds. Just if that helps anybody else.
No, it does make sense. By staying up at 50,000, you find that the job is manageable, because you can, you can swoop down to 10 and 5, and before you know it, you're, you're working awfully hard for a job no one asked you to do. Which you probably all have fallen prey to every now and then.
But these guys, these guys only get the benefit from what you did for me on my very first meeting.
Which was?
The one from 300 to 2,500. I got, I got an instant raise, because that was the meeting that you went to, and changed the stipend.
I did. Do it again in a heartbeat.
Okay. Second.
Second.
No, but it all, but anytime that I have a question about something, I either, I'll ask Matt or I'll ask Lisa, because they're both a very good source of information and direction.
I think it was, the record should trail, that it was Hughes. Yes, Hughes brought it.
Yeah, but you had the story about your mother's belly laugh.
Oh, yeah, no.
You can't let this go. I still remember how you, you were very animated up there, and you, and you did a good job, because you got me a raise my first egg.
Kevin, too, right?
Kevin was up there, but, but he had the belly laugh story, so.
Yeah, no, and honestly, the spirit just kind of put those thoughts in my head. The belly laugh was true, I was just, here I am, standing in front of town meeting that frankly didn't appreciate my cues at all. I can see where my mother's belly laugh came from. To this day, we laugh about that. Mom will always be a crutch, all right? That's, that's the consensus there. All right, good discussion. Anything not reasonably anticipated 48 hours that we haven't already covered? Moving to the motion.
Town Administrator Report.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Just...
He's out of candy, so it won't be long.
No, it'll be brief. We have posted the position of Community Development Director. It's been slim pickings. So I'm going to actually wade into the recruiting role somewhat more adequately. I finally found the person I've been trying to find from my own background is now a planner in Oregon. So I don't think, she's not coming back to New England, which stinks. Too bad.
She was in North Carolina, you know, you know, what if I'd be a little better?
So just that there are candidates, and I just want to be somewhat transparent about this, that our posting is very purposeful. So we, we're very specific about the educational and professional background that we're looking for. Because in my view, Community Development Director at this juncture in the town's development is absolutely one of the most important investments we'll make in staff skillset for a while. Because we have a lot of the traditional stuff, A and R subdivisions and all the rest of it, going on, even while we're, the economic development piece is going on, the grants and all the rest of it. And we need leverage. So we've got to keep the Economic Development Director focused on only those things that are specifically within his mandate. But because he's skilled, we keep, we'll pull him over to a water project, we'll pull him over to other things, and I, I need him to kind of stay on the reservation and keep moving the ball forward in his bailiwick. He, she, whatever. But in this case, I'm talking about Bob and Eric, who is actually a person, who is a...
I don't know what position he's in.
No, the position...
Bob was the name.
Be careful with Bob. But whoever takes the overall position of Community Development Director has many disparate pieces that have to be pulled together into one portfolio and managed accordingly. So I need somebody with a planning background with five years of experience as a planner, or an engineer with five years of experience as an engineer. Because I think either skillset will work. And I posted the upper range of the opening salary to be at Step Five, because first of all, our last document in this position wasn't experienced hire, so we brought the person over at that higher salary, because they had the experience above and beyond what the minimum required in the job posting. So I want to be in the competition. I feel like what we're offering for a salary range is really competitive, and now it's just a matter of getting the word out there. This has always been a hard position to fill. Not to sound overly aggressive about it, but I need to be firm. I will not be rushed. I don't, it's not that I don't care. I'm not overly moved by whatever logistical issues we have to work out, making sure planning board stuff gets on the agenda and all the rest of it. We'll focus on that. The difference, this time from last time, is we have a very capable principal clerk who can do an awful lot of stuff. Though we were going through a transition last time, so we had no support. This time, I think we can do a lot of, the, the ships will run on time, so now the question is getting the right person. Under no circumstances should we rush this decision at all. So if we have to post it two or three times, if we have to start getting aggressive with recruiting and start calling people directly, based on their credentials or the positive press presence that they have, then that's what we'll need to do. But I'm not looking to find a steward or placeholder for the job. It's too responsible. We've got to get the best we can get. And, you know, as you know, this, the Community Development Director position does not have a contract, not allowed to have a contract under Mass statute. But it is a department head, so any appointment I make is subject to your ratification. So there is a two-step process in appointing a department head.
You try the Mass Economic Development Council, there's a lot of planning tapes.
So I'm pulling every lever I can possibly pull. But we need the help. We need it sooner rather than later. As far as the rest of it goes, I think we've covered the rest of it. I mean, the budget. I do want to mention on the record Adam Furnell's correspondence regarding the corner of Rydell and Main, which you did the poll petition tonight. Just by, put a marker in the sand here, the goal is to make that a very narrow T intersection. So there's a lot of slosh that, over the years, that, basically a triangle intersection where people, you know, pull in and on and off. We have a lot of crashes there. It's one of our higher crash points in town. So we're eventually going to trim this thing down to be a stop sign, look left, look right, don't, you're not going to be able to slosh over and just yield your way into flowing traffic. You're going to have to stop. And it's just an absolutely necessary thing.
Almost seems like over the years, too, it's kind of gotten wider and wider.
Oh, it does.
Yeah, corrections, yeah.
Similar to what we did with Pine Street going on to South Street.
That's correct.
Cleaning it up, first of all, west.
Yeah.
Still not working too well there. People cutting across the grass.
No, it was actually the, they were cutting trees and they were parking their cars there.
I see other people scoot through there.
There's, there's always going to be somebody.
There's a couple holes out, so they don't want to give up the, the travel route. Adam's working aggressively.
There's one truck driver is going to try to bang a right onto North Street from Main, or Northeast Main, I guess you'd call it at that point. So we're exploring breakaway signs as a technology option for that corner, because that way we won't have to constantly deal with digging the sign.
They on springs?
No. So, no, the...
Do them like the Starboard Drive, hang them from the trees.
It's just, it's basically a bigger piece of steel, smallest piece of steel, so when the, if, by the force, it just snaps right at the ground, and then you just put a new sign up.
Slap the driver in the side.
I'll do that if you could put a sharpened piece of steel, it just, you really damage the vehicle, so you know it was him that ran over your sign. Yeah.
There are some pedestrian signs that didn't really work well, probably at the police department, you could repurpose those.
I think those may have disintegrated. I think I know who did it, too. It's not on the board anymore, anyway.
Oh. It's rising Canada, is he?
Canada.
No way.
I don't know, eh?
Man, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, so long story short, I, I think the only other thing we're watching very carefully is developments in the economy, and how conservative that's going to make us budgeting in future budgets. Right now, there's nothing to be overly concerned about, because it hasn't materialized yet. So you just, you read the news reports, make note of it, you see if it materializes. I will say, though, that the one thing that I'm paying very careful attention to is any impact that significant tariffs on automobiles might have on our motor vehicle excise tax revenue stream. Because if it gets real expensive to buy a vehicle, folks will buy fewer of them. Now, there's a countervailing pressure, which is that the used market...
Will go up.
Will go up. So how is that going to balance out? Can't, can't say for sure. But a 25% increase in the cost of vehicle is a shock. It's a shock to the economy, so. I'm holding out hope that, that will not materialize.
We are in much better shape than other communities around.
So it's really harsh. I mean...
Lot of challenges.
Really harsh. Last thing, BVT. Selectmen in Hope Dale has been circulating correspondence, perhaps you've been copied on it, to continue this dialogue and series of meetings with BVT catchment area communities to talk about the future of the school and how the towns are going to position themselves. I'm being a real PIA about this. I'm really not interested in conversation. I've got better things to do. If they actually talk about taking action, and being firm, and taking votes, or making carefully measured demonstrations of disapproval, I'm all for it. But to sit around a table again, and it's been eight years, doing the same thing over and over again.
So on that, Matt, I was watching the Finance Committee meeting, and there was a, our new volunteer, Ron, was particularly interested in BVT, and I thought that he might be someone with the energy to represent Douglas in that discussion.
I even used that as an example with my colleagues. I said, you talk up a blue streak, but then the BVT Subcommittee, Budget Subcommittee has a meeting, and only Douglas is there, because Ron went. Where was everybody else? They're all upset, but you've got nothing to say when the meeting occurs. So I'm kind of tired of turning around and realizing I'm the only guy running forward. Not okay. Got the football on no blockers.
So I was going to actually speak with Ron tomorrow and kind of gauge that and come back to the board and say, you know, here's an opportunity, should he be interested in using that as a vehicle to make an impact, but I don't want to put him on the spot without having spoken to him. So I'll report back next meeting with that opportunity for your thoughts. All right, we good? Ross?
All right. I'll make a motion to enter executive session for potential litigation with MSHG. Then we will reconvene into open session with the sole purpose of adjournment.
Led by Ross, second by Les. Roll call vote.
Smith, aye.
Stevens, aye.
Follow the order, young gauze.
So you want, you want to go first?
There's two left.
We're the only two left.
Bone and aye.
All right, Chris Patrick, aye.